Hello and welcome to the Tuesday, January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting of the Air Planning Board. This meeting hearing of the Air Planning Board will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation via Zoom is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with a particular interest in a specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. This meeting will be live on Zoom. The public may access the proceedings by joining Zoom, meeting ID number nine seven eight seven seven two eighty-two twenty. Note the new Zoom number, or by calling nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine. For additional information about remote participation, please contact Danny Ruiz, Town Planner, at D R U I Z at air dot M A dot U S, or nine seven eight seven seven two eighty-two twenty, extension one four four, prior to the meeting. Your call to order the first item of business is the agenda. And before we vote to approve it, I'd just like to make a suggestion that we amend it to include the review of the approval of the twelve, December tenth, twenty-four minutes.
So moved.
So moved. Do I have a second?
Yes.
That amendment.
Yes.
Voting on the amendment, okay.
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
So that's the agenda and the amendment. That's fine.
Okay, well, someone else say something.
You have something else?
Amendment, yeah.
We good? All right, so the vote.
On that amendment.
Voting on amendment, aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Do we have to vote again just for the whole thing?
He's.
Yeah, you want further discussion?
So I'd like to amend administrative matters, the project status update. Forty-two Park Street, Zero Scully Road, and Nisoya Foods, in addition to the two that are listed.
Have a second? I'll second that. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none. Ken?
Aye.
Julie?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I see. All right, good. Let's get this ball rolling. So, uh, what, what, what? Did I do something wrong here? Okay.
I don't know.
We're voting on amendment, but no, we voted on.
We voted on already. It's already amended. So, uh, first thing, we have a, the.
Fun first.
First Park Street, we already, we opened that, right?
It's already been opened.
It's already been opened. Um, and the issue here is that we have a very long letter I need to read from the applicant regarding this. And it says, Dear Danny, uh, there's no date on it, so that's why I haven't read the date. Dear Danny, I've decided to withdraw my application without prejudice. This is in reference to our application for a Domino's Pizza at One Park Street. Thank you, Keith Bell. What else do we need to do?
That's it.
Motion, do we need a motion to close? Motion to close the, uh, I, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Hearing none. Uh, Ken?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kathleen? Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Um, we also, we have continued public hearing. Wait, go ahead.
Motion to accept.
Motion to. Oh, motion to.
To accept the withdrawal.
Thank you, sir.
As presented in the letter read by the chair.
I'll second. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none. Ken?
Yes, on the letter.
Julie?
Yes.
Uh, Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chair votes aye, so we've accepted that. So. It looks like we have two Stratton Hills. The first one is just the one that's already, we've been, it applies to the actual OSRD. And then the second one is the, uh, is the special permit request for the duplexes and a stormwater management permit, right? So we, go ahead.
So the way we want to handle this is we're going to, let's open the, um, special permit and the stormwater management permit first.
Okay, the second one, open that first?
Yep, so that we can combine it and then continue them both.
Okay.
Move to open the Off-Ride Road, Stratton Hill, MAP six, parcels one, two, three, seven, eight, eleven through fifty-five, special permit seven, stormwater management permit, applicant Fox Metal Realty Co. and Molten Construction Corp. proposal, special permit request for the duplexes proposed and stormwater management permit as part of the OSRD.
Excellent. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Ken?
Aye.
Julie?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Now, next motion, do we move, open the other one as well?
That one's already open, so now we're just.
Now that all three things are open now. And my, and.
There's a letter in there.
Oh, we have a, but it's in the record already, right?
It is. It is stamped into the record and it's hanging up on the wall. Um, but if you want to redo it.
I'll read it very quick because it's not that long. So we have a letter from the, um, council for the applicant, Rob, Bob Collins. It's dated January eighth, twenty twenty-five. Dear Board members, I understand that Green International needs additional time to review Frank McPartland's responses. Kindly consider this letter as a request that the hearings for the definitive plan submission, the special permit submission, and the stormwater permit application be continued to the meeting on the twenty-eighth. Kindly also consider this letter as a request that the time by which the board must complete its hearings and file decisions on these submissions be extended until February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. Thanking the board for its time and consideration, I remain very truly yours, Robert L. Collins.
Do we have to vote on the request at all? Continue to be firm when it's just passed.
So they.
It says, I kindly, but also kindly consider this letter. So just consideration and nothing?
No, we.
What do we have to say? We consider it going on approval?
You don't have to, so, so you're just voting on the continuation?
Okay.
That's it.
Oh, I'm, I'm more involved with the February twenty-eighth.
Oh, then the extension, it's, it's up to them. We don't, we don't vote on that. They give it to us.
It's been going on for so long.
Which you would say was a request, which you.
Yeah. Well, so.
So move.
It doesn't, it doesn't have a, yeah, it doesn't.
Move to continue the Off-Ride Road, Stratton Hill, um, discussion to the January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five planning board meeting.
Second. And, and that includes all three components or just?
Oh, sorry, all three, great.
I'm happy to amend it for all three components.
Thank you, sir. And Nathan, you seconded?
Yes.
Okay. Any, any discussion?
Quickly, so today, um, there was a meeting at the DPW with myself, Frank, um, McPartland, uh, Bob Collins, um, uh, the Matt and, uh, Dan to, and Green International to go through the comments. So we've, uh, at the twenty-eighth, we'll be able to actually have a conducive, uh, discussion.
Awesome. Anything else? Hearing none. Ken?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. And we have an open public hearing for ninety-nine Barnum Road, correct? And so that's already open, so we don't need to have a vote to begin.
Correct.
And I think this is the time when we actually look at the decisions, right?
Yes, so, um, the applicant did submit, um, response, um, responses to our comments and revised plans, which were sent out to, um, the board. Um, I don't know if you guys want to go through those comments?
I'm good with them.
Sorry?
I'm good with them.
I, I'm, I saw nothing notable, controversial, or, but obviously I want to open up, you know, Julie, Kathleen, maybe Jeff.
Can we just put Dan on the screen?
Dan's camera's not on, so he's.
Well, it's hard to know. Oh, whoa.
There he is, there he is.
I need to show up, yeah, but we couldn't tell if you were there.
Yep, you know, he's there. He's just cam, unless his camera's on, he doesn't show up.
Thank you. It happened. Thank you.
Yeah, so they, they did review, um, they did respond to all the comments. I was, I was good with them. DPW was also good with the comments. They sent in revised plans. They're all addressed. And so these decisions were sent over to, uh, DPW as well as to Woodard and Current for review.
Okay. Yes, Kathleen?
Just like a logistics question for Danny. So the department head comments are going to live under meeting materials, not under current applications and plans?
Yeah, so the reason I did that was because the site plans were set into there, um, were, were sent in the, uh, like as a package. So I just included the whole thing under the current meeting minutes, I mean, under the current projects. Um, but typically I do, yeah.
So if you click on that, you'll also get the department site?
No, not the department head, the, the response to the comments.
Okay, but the, so just, if I'm looking for department head comments, I don't go under current applications and plans?
Yeah, so.
I have to go to the December tenth meeting?
Yes. Yep. Department head comments are right here. Because this is all the meeting materials, um, that were, that's not part of the actual, that are not plans or reports.
Okay, yeah, I just want to know where to find those in the digital.
But there's seven copies in there, Kathleen.
Do you, do you advise that we do the stormwater repair first or the site plan approval first?
Uh, whichever one you guys prefer to do.
Do you guys mind if I start with the major stormwater management permit?
Go ahead.
And if we go, I'm looking through, I, I guess we need a motion that would say that we, uh, we agree with the findings.
The findings as articulated in the, uh, January fourteenth.
What would you call this? Um, what is this document called?
Uh, the major stormwater management permit.
Just call the permit, I put, up, and that, uh, and then it's just that we decided.
And approved the permit, right? That's what we're looking for.
Move to accept and approve the major stormwater management permit as presented on January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. Uh, I'll, thank you. Any further discussion?
Excuse me, for ninety-nine Burnham Road project, excuse me.
Second.
Good, good. And I just want to note that we did have an opportunity for a site visit and got a, a very good walk around of, of, just for the record, good. Yeah, I just want to make sure that everyone knows that we did indeed do that.
The site visit, yes.
And it was actually, it was good site visit. Um, thank you. So we have, any, any discussion? Hearing none. Ken?
Aye.
Julie?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Who seconded it?
I did.
Uh, Julie did.
Thank you.
And now we have the site plan approval. The waiver, do we have to go through the waiver request one by one?
Uh, yes, because you have to vote on these waiver requests.
And, um, so each one requires a motion, right? So I'll start with, uh, make a motion to approve the waiver, uh, request from, um, the demand to, uh, indicate the visual impact on the surrounding areas.
Do you want to read the request?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Section four B dot C.
Yes, section four dot B. Doesn't matter that it's uppercase B, uppercase B, lowercase c.
I think that's right, that's the way it's supposed to be.
Yeah.
So I didn't, didn't I make a motion? Am I losing my mind?
Yep, you did the motion.
Is there a second available?
So you move to accept the waiver.
Move.
Move to approve the waiver request, okay. Second.
Any discussion?
Do we have to read the request or we just go for the, for the waiver?
I mean, I could waive, I could read.
The request, the request is that the new, the new construction will leave existing mature trees along the roadway in place and therefore will not visually affect the area.
Right.
Very simple. Further discussion? None. Ken?
Aye.
Julie?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. It passes.
Move to approve the waiver request, section four E, vehicular traffic circulation and parking. A waiver for section four E of site plan rules and regulations is being requested for the grow-upon-water treatment facility improvements as no changes are being made to the traffic flowing to and from the site, to and from site. The improvements result in no changes to the number of deliveries or employees that are expected to be on-site. In addition, there are no changes being made to the existing car parking available on-site as the existing car parking is already, is already sufficient for the facility's need, facility needs.
You made a motion, right?
Yes.
I'll second.
Move to approve.
I'll second that motion. Any discuss, any, any further discussion? Hearing none. Ken?
Aye.
Julie?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Move to approve the waiver request, section four F, pedestrian bicycle circulation and safety. Request a waiver for section four F of the site plan rules and regulations is being requested for the grow-up-on-water treatment facility improvements as the site is municipal property that requires authorized access. Therefore, the property is not available to the public and no pedestrian or bicycle use is expected or permitted.
Any discuss, oh, oh, I'll second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ken?
Aye.
Julie?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jonathan votes aye. The chair votes aye.
And the final waiver request, excuse me, move, the waiver request for section fourteen point eight, the planned, um.
That was already.
I'm sorry, thank you. That one's already been.
That's already passed, right?
Yep.
And then the materials we got, and then we have the findings. Nothing, uh, and then the usual general conditions and standard by the form of like. And again, even the other stuff, the prior to site, prior to issuance, this is standard stuff.
Yep, this was already sent over to Dan and to Woodard and Current.
Anything here that we should, that noteworthy, Danny, before we vote?
No, this one's pretty straightforward.
Sure is. Jeff, you're on a roll. Do you?
I was gonna say, just trying to find the first page.
You're so good in this.
Move to accept and approve the site plan approval is presented on January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five for the, um, County Area Water Department, ninety-nine Burnham Road, Air Mass Project.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ken?
Oh, whoops, oh, oh, oh. Looking at the site plan approval.
Yep.
Yes.
Do we need, I guess it doesn't matter. Never mind. I was thinking about this, the ASBIL requirement.
It's there.
It certifies, I know it's there, but I was wondering if we need to certify it themselves. Just leave it.
Yeah, just leave it. It's a part of our requirement unless they request a waiver.
Yeah, I know, it's, yeah. I think they want it.
Yeah, they're gonna, I mean, they're gonna keep it, they're gonna give it to us and they're gonna give it to Charlie and they're gonna have, keep it on record.
This is the group that deals with ASBILs all the time. I can't imagine they're not wanting that.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none. Ken?
Aye.
Julie?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Congratulations, Dan.
Not yet.
Oh, no, there's another one?
Motion to close the hearing.
Oh, we got a close hearing. I, I make a motion that we close the hearing for, um, for the whole thing, the site plan approval and major stormwater management permit for ninety-nine Barnum Road.
Second.
Yep.
Julie got that one.
Julie, okay.
Any discussion? Ken, any vote?
Aye.
Julie?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So now I get to say congratulations to Dan. I, I just have one request that when, um, the Clearwell is about to be built, if you could just let us know, because some of us, they want to go out and see the construction of, of the town. I mean, just a favor, I mean, it's not a biggie. Is it okay?
It's gonna be.
Oh, you're muted.
I thought I was muted. There we go.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dan. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dan.
We're into administrative matters and before I forget, I, I just want, I got an, Eileen, my wife, got an email from Boston College today that, um, the school is sponsoring a Jane Jacobs and Climate Change Conference one day. It's a Saturday in March. And, uh, I called the school today to see, is it open to every, anyone, you know, can you, and, and they said yes. And I said, you know, and when I explained my role and our role, you know, you, they were thrilled. That, so, um, the registration page won't come up until like early or mid-February, but it's coming down the pike and I just want to just give you a preview, pre-notice of it that when the registration's up, I'll ask to see who would like to come with me and we'll form a little caravan or depending how many people want to go, one car, two cars.
Sorry.
I think it's March twenty-third, but I don't want to die on that hill. I should have written it.
BU or BC?
BC, Boston College, yeah. Yes, Boston College, Jane Jacobs and Climate Change, it's, it, it, so it turns out that Boston College has, Jane, has the Jane Jacobs, uh, papers. And so, and, and for anyone that doesn't know, Jane Jacobs is kind of the, um, godmother of, of modern urbanism. She wrote a famous book called The Death and Life of American Cities, profoundly influential, and it's one of the reasons I'm here. So she's a hero to me and I'm very interested.
Oh, you keep us updated.
I will. You know about Jane Jacobs, right? You have to.
Yeah, you have to learn about it.
Oh, yeah. Okay. So the first, uh, project status update, you take them in the order you want, sir.
Um, so ninety-one Grotton Harvard Road, they proposed a, um, change to their plans that was very minor. Um, it was, I showed it to the building commissioner. He determined that it could be dealt with administratively. So I had them issue a revised set of plans just showing the changes, which were, they re, they got rid of the office space. It's all going to be storage now. Um, it's, it's all going to be warehouse storage. So that front area that was like, it's like five thousand square feet of like office, it's no longer going to be there because they need all, as much as storage space as they can get. Um, which made some changes on the layout along the, um, uh, the side of the building where they had parking because that now has a garage spot right there. So that was the, the change of, of it. And so, uh, I issued them an administrative letter and a, um, and they submitted revised plans.
Thank you.
The next one is Air Substation. So they are going to be also possibly doing an amendment. Um, I don't know if you guys remember, but they had a septic system on site within an existing septic system with a bathroom. Uh, one of the comments from DPW was that they would suggest, uh, changing that connecting to the sewer. They chose not to. Now they're choosing that they want to do that. So that's a revision that could be coming forward. I don't think it would require them coming before you, but it'll just be revised plans.
Great, thank you.
Uh, forty-two Park Street, what would you like to?
I want you to review the project with us.
Yeah, so, I mean, if you guys go out there right now, you know, they have pavement down, they, uh, the house is basically fully built. Um, I haven't been inside of it because that's, that's Charlie's, uh, domain. Um, I believe so once, once the winter's done, they should be able to close out, uh, get rid of the, the, uh, the erosion control that's back there. But that I would have to talk to Heather about on whether or not we're ready for that. Um, but we won't know until the end of the, until the beginning of the spring, when we can actually see out there. Right now, the ground's frozen, so it's acting as it should. Um, and since there's no site work going on, um, SWIP reports have been, they're, they're good with that. Um, I know you had, you had a concern.
Request for any changes with that site plan?
No. Uh, I know you have a concern about the, um.
It's not built to grade.
It's, yeah, there's steps. I know, there's wood steps out there if you look at it. I know. I, I, I can't, that is not.
There's been a request for any minor or major change to the.
That would, I mean, based on what I, seeing the plan.
You've got no requests.
No, no, no requests, but based on what I saw out there, I know those, those wooden steps that are out there right now. Um, I would say that that's probably would fall within the minor enough where Charlie would be okay with that being a field change. Um, but I'm not going to speak for him. He does know about it. He has been informed. Um, he knows what the plans were approved as. It comes down to when they submit for ASBILs, uh, they submit the ASBILs, he, he'll make the determination on what they need to do if they need to do anything.
That's the way you read it? I mean, that's the way you interpret it?
Yep.
So our ASBIL requirement and our decision.
Yep.
Doesn't that require us to go on the site and have a final walkthrough? Or we're entitled to do that. I know the language tells us that we can go out there anytime we want.
Yeah, you're, if you want to go out there, you can.
I'm, I'm going back to Park Street where we did do a final walkthrough over there and double-checked. There was a punch list, you know, before they got. They suggested get a occupancy, excuse me, not Park Street, yeah. Central Lab, Central Street.
Yes, yes.
So the sequence was the planning board ran out at the end. Charlie said, go out there, you know, let me know that, you know, you, you deal with compliance with the site plan.
Yeah.
There was a few things he hadn't done, rip pep wise, and we made some changes that he didn't, that he had to CO, so.
Yeah, yeah, so before.
I'd like to keep the planning board in the final walkthrough.
So, I know, we're talking about something that has been talked about, not at this table. We're discussing the fact that the, I'm going to say the south side of the building, the doorway is three to four feet above the grade, when the original plans were that the door would open onto grade. Correct. There. Yep.
That plus.
That's, there's other things also, but that's, that's the one you can see as you're driving by. Yes. Yeah.
I'm gonna walk by.
Just want people to know what we're talking about.
Oh, okay.
And, and I don't know if it started because the foundation was irretrievable, what happened to get, to get us there. But we spent an awful lot of time talking about that site and how it was going to drain and all those.
Instead of stamp drawings.
Yeah.
It's designed that way.
Yeah.
It's applied with our regulations.
But just so that everyone knows what we're talking about.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and, and yes, you will be, so prior to them receiving certification of occupancy, you will, you'll have to go out there as, yeah. That's, that's the process that we will, that's in the regulations and we'll follow that.
But if I, let me ask.
Yep.
Is it the building? This is more just for understanding, is it the building commissioner's responsibility to make sure that the building meets the stamp drawing?
So. I'm not going to speak for what Charlie's job is. I do, so the way I would, I would say is when there's always changes to a plan in the field that are done and Charlie determines whether or not they're minor enough where they didn't, do not require coming to the planning board. Um, so it comes down to that.
I'm not asking if they come to the planning board, I'm just asking that when something's built and changes occur, is it the building commissioner's responsibility to check those, check if those two things are alike or different and then take action if different?
Um, at the end of the project, prior to them getting CO, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And on the other side of it, I know people who are, just can't wait for the code, for the shop to open there because the.
The shop?
Yeah, the hair salon. Beauty salon, hair salon.
Okay, good.
They're waiting for the hair salon to open. Mm-hmm. It's a very, very, very popular person who's a long way away right now.
Oh, nice.
Nisoya?
Nisoya. Um, so actually Heather and I went out there and met with them. There was, there was quite a bit of concern in December that we've had, we had with them. Quite a lot of issues that have been going on with, uh, Nisoya. Um, not having erosion controls out there properly, not having them inspected properly. Um, not having someone on, on retainer or hired to do the inspections. So that we had been dealing with quite a lot of issues out there, uh, there were two times where I had to shut them down. Um, just, and then in December, I told, uh, Charlie that I needed to give them a cease and desist, like completely. And within that day, they came back and they were getting everything done that I requested from them. Um, it's bad that, you know, I don't like having to do that. You know, I've been trying to work with them. Heather and I have been trying to work with them for quite a while. I mean, since our pre-construction meeting, took a little bit of time before they finally took, came into compliance. Now we're getting SWIPers reports every week. Um, you know, the site's being inspected properly, there's not any really, there's not construction really going on, uh, well, there's, um. The site guy who's in charge right now is only in charge of a certain part of the phase. He's not in charge of building the buildings or any of that, so he's not really doing as much as what will happen in the spring. Um, but um, they're moving pretty slowly out there. Um, Zero Scully Road, uh, they did reach out about doing a pre-construction meeting, we have not, um. They haven't told us when they, um. When they got the erosion, when the erosion controls will be in, they had reached out about saying like they were gonna go put them in a couple of weeks ago, but never reached back out. Um, so right now, we're at the process, we're kinda just like sitting and waiting for them to reach back out.
Did he pull the permit? He's clearing the lot. The tree, the tree company's out there clearing the lot.
Clearing the lot? No, 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 he should be. Yeah, I think he's only clearing out, he's only clearing out a cer- a certain amount of trees so that he can put the construction entrance in. Not the whole lot, no.
Okay.
But they shouldn't, I'll go back, I'll go. Based on our.
Yeah, no, they they came to us, asked Danny and I if they could go in due for the the uh construction entrance, they had to take down, I think it was like six or eight trees.
Yeah.
Uh, and that was right where that driveway was existing with that big mound of dirt, it was right in that area there, so they shouldn't be doing any other work besides just those few trees. Um, but they 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 came for permission for that, um, before Christmas.
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
When you drive out there with.
Well, I I I'm gonna take it what you said, that's it, I'm gonna go with that.
Okay, well, I'm gonna drive by there tomorrow then.
Go with what you said. I was, you know.
I'll I'll go double check.
I can't, I can't imagine that they would do.
Yeah, I don't think he would, yeah, I don't think he would have done that.
Yeah. So did they boy removing some trees, you guys gave him permission to do that?
Yes, yep, so that they could get the erosion control in.
Cool.
MBTA communities update, Danny?
Yes, um, so I'm sure everyone heard that the Milton case, uh, there was a a a decision. Put um given down uh for the Supreme Court on the the Attorney General versus Milton. Um, basically what it, uh, the the Supreme Court decided was that the Attorney General does have the authority to enforce. The um MBTA um regulations. Um, and that it came down to basically that. Where Milton did also win was that the state did not follow chapter thirty A uh promulgation.
GPA, Administrative Procedure.
Yeah, the Administrative uh Procedure Act on how to promulgate uh the regulations, so they have to just do that now and once that.
Is the correct word, regulations?
Yes, yep, it's regulations. That's what the um court said, regulations and guidelines are, they said were inter- were interchangeable because they basically do the same things. That's, that's what the court, what the court case said. Um, that they just need to.
Tell people about it the right way and they now are gonna correct that.
Correct. Yeah, I just so we all understand, yeah. Yes, so the, what they used as guidelines are the regulations is what they're saying.
And that's the promulgation guidelines.
Correct.
It's not the actual MBTA zoning.
Correct. And that's why at town meeting, I said we needed to make sure to go through with it anyways.
And uh Marshall's voting today on it.
The decision was made that the state was entitled to put that bylaw through.
Yes.
The zoning bylaw change, all the requests for zoning bylaw changes.
Yeah, and and it's my understanding that the enforcement arm of it is not available to the Commonwealth yet. Because of the promulgation issues. But the governor's office has had expected to fix it by last weekend.
Yep.
And start the promulgation again, so the enforcement will happen very soon.
Correct, um, but so basically any town who is not in compliance right now, those guidelines cannot be enforced right now. Until they have gone through the full proper steps of that. Um, and then also, our application was submitted in December. Um, they're in the review phase and so we're kind of in that, um, sit and wait.
Okay, great.
What is the ethics commission test, that's a.
It's a, um, yes, so every two years, I believe.
Carly's office promulgates, it goes to everybody who is elected or on or on a board. You go online, well, maybe you didn't do it. No, you, you. We all have to go through it.
So you would have known if you didn't do it, um, it's an, the Ethics Commission basically. Uh, sends out this email to everybody who works for a municipal government or is on a board. Um, so like I have to do it for Chalmers and I have to do it for air. Um, basically, it just goes through what you're supposed to, what you can accept, what you can't accept, what you're not supposed to do. It's, oh yeah, it's it's an hour and fifteen minutes of fun.
This'll come to us individually through our air outlook email address.
Yes.
And we will be notified and there'll be a link and we just follow.
And I'll remind everyone once they go out. Yeah, it's, it's, it is, but the big change now is. Those who didn't take the tests or do it on time, the town would get in trouble, they're no longer doing that. It's now each individual person will go, they, the state will go um and talk to or go after, I don't know how, but, but that was the wording that they were used, go after.
All right.
And continue, and uh guys, we used to do this on paper.
Yep, so that's, that's the Ethics Commission test, that'll be coming soon, I think probably March time.
Oh, March?
Yeah, March. I, I'll, I'll double check, I just know, I think it's at the end, I I have an email from Carly.
That's why I'm fresh on the forty nine dollars.
Yes, yes, up to forty nine.
Speaking of ethics, um, so.
This is the stuff I pay attention to if I'm sitting here.
We need to schedule a refresher for the open meeting law, again, it's not punitive, it's something we all need, I know I need it. What are our options for, can we do it during a meeting when we anticipate it's not gonna be quite as jammed like in February?
So we could.
Not the next one would be no good.
What?
It would have been good tonight, with the cancellations.
I didn't, we didn't know about that until. Yeah, I'm, so we could do it during a meeting, or we could do it prior to a meeting. Or we could, um, do it on another day, so it it's, it's really kind of up to what you guys want to do. Um, I'll just reach out to town council to have them do it, do the, you know, presentation for us. Um, so it's kind of figuring out, what do you guys wanna do, do you wanna do it during a meeting, like the first thing? And that way, when it's a not busy, um, schedule, like we don't have a lot of things on the agenda, it'll, it's something to kind of get us through that meeting.
Yes, that's what I, everyone else gets, everyone gets a vote, but I'm just, yes, I prefer during a meeting.
Happy to do it during a meeting.
Yeah, and just as you said, you know, a meeting, if you if you look at February, for instance, and it looks like there's nothing really. Super urgent or take up a lot of time where no one's gonna be sitting waiting for an hour while we do it.
It shouldn't be an hour. But yes, yes, um, yeah, um, okay, I can, um, I'll talk to town council.
Can we do it all, can we do it hybrid?
I think we can, um, but yes, uh.
The Commonwealth has adopted remote and hybrid, so, yeah, I assume we can.
All right, um, so scheduling, so I'll look in February, I'll, I'll let you guys all know. You know, as we're getting close, when I'm working on the agenda, just so that, once I know what's on there, what's not on there, um, I can let everyone know. And then I can also talk with coun- town council. All right, um, potential town meeting zoning amendments for uh annual town meeting.
Yeah, what's on your mind?
Um, so. The, I know, so at our department head meeting. Robert said that it's going to be a busy town meeting. Uh, there's gonna be a lot of items on it, you know, uh, there's already twenty something items on it.
Wow.
So, um, we have that, and so I don't know how many amendments I'm gonna get. Um, so, right now, I know of the floodplain, um, overlay district amendment that we need to do. Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
We talked about this before?
No, so this uh DEP, um, uh, there, they came up with a new compliance model for floodplain. It's FEMA and DCR and all them working together, FEMA plan, uh, new FEMA maps, um, so there's a bunch of. Stuff that came down with all of this new FEMA maps information, um.
FEMA maps are really important cuz they're wrong, you know, all over town.
They, you know, they. Yeah, they're ten years.
Playing wrong.
Hmm, okay, well, so we're upda- we're updating those, um, it's, it's, it's quite long now. Our original floodplain bylaws, like maybe two pages now, it's gonna be like six pages long. There's a lot of stuff, yeah, so, but I've, I've already done a draft of it, I've gotten it put together. Um, I actually sent it over to Heather and to Charlie to review because. So each town has to designate within the bylaw who's their floodplain officer and since. And I believe ours is, the building commissioner has been for, since, at least since I've been here. Um, so it's kinda like, there's a lot of new things that they've added, like subdivision stuff, um. Rules on, eh, there's just a whole bunch of stuff, so that's been sent over to them to to start reviewing as well. Um, the other one was, um, the, uh. I have a small cottage development, um, bylaw that I'm going to be, um, we're gonna be discussing at the next, um. Uh, yeah, working group meeting, um, I actually have a s- a bunch, like a draft bylaw that we can start discussing. And a lot of information on a study that was done, um, in the state of Massachusetts and some other states was. Washington about all these little, these projects of like small cottage developments. Um, so I have something put together, Charlie's been working on some plans. As to how they could lay out and work, um, so we're gonna start looking, talking about that at the next meeting. Um, um, I'm hoping that.
The next meeting, the working group or? I would love to get an update on what's going on with that working.
Yes.
Regarding this.
Yep.
Put that in the next agenda.
Yes.
Do you wanna know?
Yeah, um, actually, I I I can give you guys an update on that right now. So Charlie has a bunch of amendments that he wants to get done at for this town meeting. I don't know how many of them will be able to actually get done, there's quite a few of like definitions that need to be updated. Some of, some of the table of use regulations need to be just updated to add, like, uh, commercial parking areas, forestry. Um, there's like a bunch of little small things that Charlie wants to get done, um, that we've been discussing.
Charlie's been commissioner, he's, these are things he's observed. And he wants to get corrected before uh he's done with his time.
Correct, yes, before he retires, at the end of the year.
Oh, this is formal now?
That's, that's what it's been.
I never, I'm sorry.
That's what it's been for.
I'm totally confused, but that's status quo.
Um, when you say he wants to get them done and you're not sure if they'll be done, is that because?
Of how many, um, warrant articles I get.
Are, is that capped?
I, I, last year I was capped at four.
And you and what Charlie wants to get done are the same, so there's not a building commissioner cap, any town planner cap?
Correct, no, cuz everything comes through us as the planning board, cuz we are the ones who handle the zoning amendments. Um, so when it comes to zoning amendments. Uh, they don't like to have too many on the spring, the annual one, because it, and it gets really late.
The. Tradition has been money in the spring, zoning in the fall. In the last couple of years, they've become hybrid because of exigence. MBTA had to get done, a whole bunch of stuff had to get done, so they've become hybrid meetings.
Okay.
But there's still a give and take and and the select board actually set the, set the warrant. So that's, I don't think it's artificial, I think it's just the right thing to do.
And and the, the important one definitely is the floodplain, because we have to have that in place prior to June, I believe it is. So like, there's certain ones that take precedent because of, you know, time limits and stuff.
Understand what the block.
Yeah.
And the floodplain impacts people's insurance expenses and all kinds of stuff, coverage and all kinds of stuff. So that becomes very important very quickly.
Yeah.
Backing up just a few if I could, Mr. Chief. The state has sent down to us this floodplain change of the federal government or somebody. And said, just like the MBTA communities, but in a simplified form. You must change your zoning to be in compliance, if you don't change your zoning, it just, what happens?
Um, we, anyone who has floodplain insurance would not be covered because of. Cuz we're one of the towns who have, who are eh, we go, we have a, what is it called? We are, I forget what kinda town we are, th- th- there's a specific name that they give for each town that is, uh, that. Has floodplain bylaws, has floodplanes and has flood insurance, and so you have to be in compliance with the flood insurance companies too and.
So if we were to take a zoning map and you put it up there now. We could see the floodplain overlay district?
Yes, I can show it to you right now.
Which may not change, the, the, we think it might change.
I believe it, it did change.
Floodplain maps are becoming much more accurate.
She, she knows much better on this than I do. Okay, great, that's great.
Yeah, so the, um, the FEMA floodplain maps were, which are put out by DCR. They, they, they updating them, um, they were in draft form since I think last spring or May, last spring or summer. They're actually going to affect, the reason we're updating the bylaws to reflect those changes. If the bylaws not changed to reflect the changes to the flood maps, we have no right to enforce them. For the most, like, I mean, cuz it was things like, with the, if the, if your zoning map doesn't meet. The floodplain overlay district is a little bit different than the floodplain map, the FEMA flood map, those are two different things.
They, they tie in together, but they're different, yes.
Refers to the.
Yeah, so the bylaw refers to the maps.
Right, exactly, yeah.
That's a proposed, the current hasn't been released yet. No, that is the current.
Current, it's the current, yeah, right.
The, the proposed hasn't been released yet, um, I don't know when it's gonna be released, I have the link to the draft, but I, it did.
They're not filed.
But they haven't been released yet, and and there has been quite a bit of addition done to those maps. Um, in particular, just to, as a reference to you, when we did the third street, thirty three third street.
Yep.
Under the new maps, I think, um, more of that property added into the floodplain, that lot three. Yes, um, but that wasn't anything that the conservation commissioner, this is the planning board could do anything on because those maps weren't finalized yet. Um, but just as a reference, so there had been additional changes to that, so most things that you see that were, that were near water, that were in that hun- that were in that five hundred. Became in the hundred. That's, that's the change that you saw for the most part.
Can you scroll that up just a little bit further, what says zoning districts?
Oh, this?
So. The overlay, well, the overlay is not shown there then, right?
No, cuz it's just the flood zones.
Yeah.
So that's, that's the state M R P C flood zones.
Correct. Yeah, it's the digital version of the, of the flood map.
Yeah.
Do me a favor over here, cuz could you go up to Washington Street, just beyond the school, I just, I'm curious because I know what the map looks like. The real map, I'm not sure if this matches it or not, but. House in the floodplain.
Your house.
You're, you're too far up.
You're right up here. It's just gonna load.
What I'm curious is what's.
It takes a little bit for the flood.
What depth of wa- what depth of waters that, does that red represent?
Hundred year floods.
Hundred year floods, so that's, it's a, is it the, the, um, two, two, two thirty five? Yeah. Elevation, yeah, is the elevation, yeah.
So, one of the things that this could impact, you guys probably must have thought of it, is West Main Street. Cuz they were on the edge, well, you know.
Well.
The, the DMG proposed.
Oh, yeah, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't go, I didn't go look at that, I was more interested in the fact that the, of East Main Street.
My house is in the flood zone. When it's thirty to forty feet higher of that wetland.
Exactly.
Twenty five feet.
Yeah, in, in some areas, it actually went down, so.
And, and that's the same thing, we have the exact.
Soletu had to go for an amendment, my neighbor had to go for amendment, I had to go for amendment. Just because some bonehead person pushed it up the hill instead of along where it goes, which is down here. Belongs down this way, like this, well.
Yes, it does.
So this, this ever is all over town, that's.
That's why you don't, when anybody comes to me and says that this is a, that's a guess of a satellite.
No, no, what I'm saying is, but the reason I should put it up is that that happens to match, from what I've got.
On the FEMA maps?
That era is matching the FEMA map.
And that happens all over the place.
The FEMA map touches my, the, the Sharpie on the FEMA map actually touches my foundation.
So anyway. It's just in conversation, so. So are you finished with the amendment?
He is.
And that's, yep, that's all I've got.
You're wrong, fortunately, I just.
Oh, oh, you wanna, yeah, that's right, you wanna.
Number one. The zoning map.
Yes, that's right.
That's right.
So, your zoning map amendment.
I don't know if we have to review it with the board or not, but we'll.
Yeah.
No, I mean, we'll have to do it eventually, but not tonight.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, no, when I, when I bring it to the, bu- once I bring it to the, to the select board. Yeah, we still have to have a public hearing, yeah.
All that, all of that, but I didn't know if they were interested in why the map had to be changed. Here's a deficiency that goes back to nineteen, before zoning in the town. That is gonna be pointed out even a moment here, that happens to be where the DPW land is. And where my senior center is gonna be built.
The discan team's there, even a moment, there it goes, yep.
Yeah, okay, so according to that map, the gray in the map is the Devon's enterprise zone. At seventy eight, seventy six point five acres of that whole piece right there is, is the DPW, this piece right here. Not that, that's still Devon's, but the rest, so all these years.
Since like seventy five, I think it was?
Since the United States Army gave this piece of land to the town of Air. And subsequent to that, since the Devon's enterprise zone came in and mass development took over. And subsequent to that, since the Devon's enterprise zone came in and mass development took over, their maps are correct. They show that not being part of it. Interestingly enough, the town of Air zoning map still shows as part of the Devon's enterprise zone. So we have to admit, we have to change that, and we have to agree on what that zoning will be. Number one, you think it's our one, well.
It's it's general residence.
General residence, we have to agree that it's gonna be general residence.
Uh, there's there's no discussion on that, I'm sorry.
Fine, I'll take it.
And I only mean it, and I don't, I only mean it because you can't spot zone. It has to be general residence. Correct.
So here's a fascinating comment, that the DP, the rest of the DPW land.
Isn't general.
Has no residences, but it's general residence.
Yeah, but it's a municipal use.
So, that's just fascinating.
It's also pre-existent.
It will, look at, look at the whole area, remember, all of that is general residence.
But we could go on this, we could have this forever.
Yes.
Anyway, that's the first amendment that has to get done.
That is correct.
That is a definite mistake that's been around for a long, long time.
Okay, so that, so I have three. Or maybe I might, I it. That and the floodplain are number one, are number one and number two, we'll see how many else I get, and then we'll we'll process of elimination, we'll do. We'll figure out what we need to do from there.
Thank you. Can I ask you a favor?
Yes.
Could you send me an email summarizing your notes to me tomorrow?
I'm liking, I wanna keep up with.
Yes, yeah, no, I'll I'll call you tomorrow, we'll we'll discuss, yeah.
Showing a three acre lot that's gonna be broken away for the for the. You ready for the ADU update?
Yes, um, ADU update. The third.
You you said you had three definite unless I misheard.
Well, I I have two definite right now, a third is what I thought would be the small cottage, but. I think that's going to make it, it's gonna depend on what what I get for how many, and then there's Charlie's changes that he wants, so. I'm gonna be doing a lot of juggling to try to make people happy and we'll we'll see what we can do.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, uh, ADU update, so uh, as of February second, the ADUs are now by right. So, there are draft state regulations that um, you know, that the state has put out and sent out to everybody. There there's still draft, there's still draft.
Does each town have to update their zoning?
Yes, so this, well.
You put a pointer in saying follow the Commonwealth guidelines.
So, yes, we, every town does need to update their zoning, but on on February second. It automatically comes, becomes by um, by right, so it's enforced, so. All the towns that are gonna be making changes are gonna be making them in in the spring town meeting, so eh, you know. Between that February second and town meeting, whatever um. Whatever is not, you know, anyone can can apply as long as they follow the state regs, end of story. As a town meeting for any other town that has puts regulations, cuz there are towns that are putting regulations. Like site plan review, um, yeah, I, Chelmsford is doing that, they're. I can't believe it.
I can name the towns, but don't worry about it.
Yes, so, so there's towns that are doing that, um. Our bylaw has, we have an ADU bylaw, so. There's ways that we can handle this. We can, one, just eliminate the bylaw, and it's by right, and it's handled building, like building uh, by the building permit process. And it's just gets stricken from the zoning bylaws. Or we can update the the bylaws to follow what the um. State requirements are. There's, so there's either way we can do that. I know there's also some concerns in town from people on. This could becoming by right and wanting to possibly do site plan review, require site plan review for it. I am not one of those, I don't agree with that, I I believe that. No, I mean, it's not the intent, but the the state does say that you can do that as long as it does not. Hinder or go above what the regulations require. But towns are using that as kind of a way to make it difficult.
Chilling.
Yes, um, so.
It has expense and time.
Exactly, exactly.
I know, Ken.
I I just wanna make a comment for anyone who may be watching the video or recording in the future, that um. The byright ADU laws. Do give municipalities, town cities uh, leeway to regulate. Short term rentals, so please don't confuse ADU with short term rental, two different things.
Correct.
So, the, anything that the state does the ADU should not set up any alarms about um, uh, the short term rentals, we still have controls.
Yeah, I'm I'll pull up the actual regs, um, cuz I have them on up on the website for us.
If I recall, at the town meeting when we talked about our ADU, um, rules and regs, our bylaw, there was a discussion about. Who could live in it and for how long and stuff like that, and there was a process by which you got approval. I don't know how that lines up with the Commonwealth, I haven't looked at it.
Yeah, so our, um, the the you can, that's prohibited now, you can't require that the person who lives in the house be be a family member. Um, you you, there's no, um, so these are all the prohibitions if you look up on the website. I mean, uh, so there's no, uh, you can't have owner occupancy requirements, no minimum parking requirements. Um, use and occupancy restrictions, unit cap and density in relationship to prin- principal dwelling. So you can't require, um.
Actually, we have, we have an interesting one.
There is, you can have one space required, right?
Yes, yes, you you can't just, but you can't go above and beyond, like, um, you know, some places are trying to do that.
Uh, and we have. I believe in our bylaw, we define the property as being complimentary to the original dwelling. In style and. I don't know how that fits with relation to principal dwelling on the Commonwealth. That's okay with me, I mean, I just, I'm just thinking it through, it's been a long time since I read.
Yeah, and then there's unre- yeah, and then there's unreasonable reg- regulation, which is this is what you're talking about, design standards. You can't, you can't have.
It's it's an attempt not to allow redlining.
Yes, uh, dimensional standards, you know, um. U- utility safety, environmental regulation. No, dimensional standards don't stand, but you can't make it worse.
You can potentially change them to make it impossible.
Correct, specifically for ADUs, yeah, you have to keep what you have, you can't specifically enforce for ADUs.
Right, that's good.
Um, so there's a lot of these short term rentals. This is the one that they do say, the following regulations, you know, shall be considered unreasonable and applicable. Short term rentals, any restrictions or prohibition prohibited, uh, prohibitions on short term rentals that are not consistent with. MGL chapter sixty four G, so. If if. You can't regulate short term rentals if they follow sixty four G.
Okay, we don't have short term rentals in our zoning, so we don't have to worry about it, period.
Yeah, that's an interesting point.
Okay.
We did change the bylaw to say that if it's not, if it's not specifically.
That's the state law, the language.
Yeah, if it's not specifically allowed.
In our, then where it's, if it's not shown, it's not allowed.
Exactly.
Well, so some towns, it depends on the charter, yeah, it depends on the town charter. Because, yeah, that's where it comes into like.
Some towns are different. Years ago, because it wasn't said or not said, people did what were coming forward, saying you can do it, cuz you don't, you don't disallow it.
Correct, and that's, and that's how some towns still are.
Thank you. Uh, I sent out, Heather, thank you for doing the December minutes, and I sent out some, uh, a few, uh, what, did I do some, oh, I'm sorry, Kathleen, I didn't see.
Steps in which you decide, you, the board.
So, this is. Yeah, so we're, um. I'm I'm still uh, kind of waiting on uh, Charlie. Um, there's, there's still kind of been a lot of meetings going on with the state and building commissioners and stuff like that, um, I'm. Uh, there's, so I'm kinda still waiting to hear from him. I mean, I think in the end, the board will still have to make a determination as to what you guys want to do, if you guys want to just strike. The bylaw or amend the bylaw, but we have to do one of the two.
And then I guess a follow up question on that is that. Correct me if I'm wrong, as I build my understanding here, amending this bylaw would mean going to town meeting to amend it. Striking is also a town meeting.
Right.
Right, okay.
Any any action on a bylaw requires town meeting?
Got it.
Correct.
A regulation can be promulgated by a board without going through town meeting?
And then, um, maybe a a more technical question, if you strike the bylaw. Do you then have to like add a pointer to the state, or it does that just blanket apply?
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
The language typically says. Remove and replace with, somewhere along those lines, and it will either point to the Commonwealth. Um, like we, we recently did this with, um. We 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 had a bylaw. Thank you, inclusionary, inclusionary housing, it, we're required to follow state guidelines, instead of us rewriting it. We just, oh, use these law, use these, and so I I'm, I don't know what we'll do, but I would recommend that we. Basically agree to use what the Commonwealth is promulgating as the vast general law as the guide.
Then my my last question on that is. If the state, cuz I I feel like we get this case where like the state says something and they give us like a nice little number and we reference it. Is that thing that we reference live, like eh eh, is that that an advantage?
Yeah, so I get what you're saying, so, one, the um. These regulations or requirements that they gave us are still in draft form. I don't know when they'll actually be fully, you know, enacted. Those are done through the state legislature, so. Yes, they could be live and amendable, but it eh, you have to go through the state. Legislature process, because we as a as a town can't amend it. We could, eh eh, you can't, you can't be more, we have to be in compliance with what they have.
And it's and it, it's assumed that it takes a long time for this, for the people up on, uh.
So if.
In town to get to get things done.
And then a year later, the state adds in some additional requirement. You now, if if you are not merely referencing, you now are.
Updating it.
Updating the bylaw, okay, sorry, it's just like trying to get all this.
Yeah, so it's a pointer to a live, to a live thing, that will change, we can assume if it changes over time, it still applies here.
Kinda like what we did in the inclusionary housing with the multifamily.
VOHLC is doing a lot of work and it's crazy for us to read, it used to be we would do our own thing. And turn it back on the Commonwealth, but they figured that out with MBTA, with inclusionary and now with ADUs.
Right. Okay, thank you.
He's trying to get out of here, what's the story?
What do you got?
Clarify, clarify me if I'm wrong.
Yep.
You've shown us the regulations.
Yes.
But the actual language, clarify me if I'm wrong, was in an affordable housing bill.
Yes.
Passed by the state.
Yep.
So at the current stage, we do have a bill that has the language in it.
Yep.
And these are the draft regulations to go with that language.
Correct.
So I think to clarify it, we should probably have the language of the bill, not just the draft regulations. Which is, you can get it, I have it, I don't have my.
Yes, I I have it, I have it.
I took it down cuz I was watching it go through the process.
Yeah, it's referenced way deep in there. Um, I I mean, I got it through.
But so what I'm getting at is there is some, there is some bona fide language already that talks about this in the, the bill that was passed.
Yeah, it 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 has the the minimum, the the requirements, basically, there's like five requirements that it has to, you have to follow. The rest of the regulations are building on that.
But so, but the question is now, someone walked into Charlie's office after February first, and complied with that state passed bill. They can pull a permit.
Correct.
They can do it, but that's the, that's the answer I'm trying to get to.
Yes.
It's live, you can do it.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It is totally intended to create denser and more affordable housing.
Yeah, which is in compliance with what we're trying to do as a town.
Absolutely.
It's right down our alley.
Yep. Yes.
Uh, sorry, I, can I ask a question? Um, so that, I, in reading the regulations, can you go to the section that says something about modular dwelling unit?
Yes.
As a layperson, I did not understand what this was saying in regards to like this. Prefab tiny home.
Yeah, there's this, so, um, there's a section in here where it talks about modular dwelling units, number seven, where it says any requirement to prohibit. Regulate and restrict a modular unit uh, from being used as a protected ADU is more is more restrictive than the Bill, Massachusetts State Building Code. So, um, let me explain what that is, so a modular is basically they come pre-built houses. They're just, you you boom, 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 standing up, and it's almost like a Legos, you know.
Or they just take the trailer out for me, drop on the ground. It comes fully built, and they pull the trip, they pull the wheels up from underneath it, yeah.
We haven't seen that yet.
So. So what you can, what what, what can happen is someone, instead of building a garage and putting a unit above. They just bring in a modular ADU that's already built and then plop it right there, and that's your.
Allowed?
That is allowed, yes.
And I think that the state deliberately put that language in there so that, uh. Weisenheimer boards can't say, ah, but we'll prohibit the modulators, because they recognize that.
Yes, modulators have become more popular.
You can buy them on Amazon.
They make perfect sense.
You can buy them on Amazon.
Cuz in their definition, I I think if you go slightly.
Yeah, to their actual.
It says like it must include plumbing, electrical, but then. It it shall not include a manufactured home, and then this is where I I like didn't have the reference to.
Yeah.
I don't know what, cuz like right prefab and manufactured sound very similar, so I I didn't know what, what specifically that.
A manufactured home is.
MGL.
That, I I'd have to look it up, um.
Or or if you have the intuition, I mean, you don't.
Yes, it would be, but I don't know what it, what that actual, what. Chapter one forty S thirty two Q is, I I, that I don't, I wouldn't.
Looking up.
Okay.
I drive by a company that sells those, when I'm in Deerfield, I'll get the name of the company.
Yeah, and so they're saying that these are fully allowed.
Yes, yes, and this is to make, because they knew, so so. ADUs were one of those boogeymen that, you know, a lot of towns, we don't want that, you're gonna, you know.
Destroy some value of your neighbor's property.
Yeah, it was, you know, one of those things, and the state felt that this was, this was a good way to provide additional. Um, rentable space for people who need it. They wanted to create this so that it, towns wouldn't try to find loopholes into how to block it.
Okay.
ZBA was dealing with the co- uh, uh, a family, I forget the, can you remember the name of the road off of Wright Road? Where family members wanted to build a small unit so they could live there and take care of their aging and uh, parents.
It's the one right off of, yeah, yeah.
And anyway, it this is. Had this been in in effect twenty four months ago, it would have.
They would have just done it.
Yep.
They have a strange lot.
They have a strange lot, they'd have to get.
It's the one right at the intersection of.
Let's be perfectly, perfectly acceptable use of the land.
The thing you have to keep in mind is no matter what these ADUs are, they're gonna have to get a building permit, they're gonna have to sit. Dimensions have to be correct to fit on the lot.
They still have to go through the whole building. Yeah.
They're trying like crazy to make sure that we get them.
Move to approve, the meeting minutes from December tenth. As revised and promulgated.
Thank you. Uh, I'll second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, okay. You have abstain, Julie abstains, Kath- Kathleen could vote on that, but no, she wasn't there, Nathan.
Wait, were you there?
We're there, you were there, you were there?
Sorry, sorry.
Uh, yes.
Yes.
Nathan? Did you say aye?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Before we go, there's, uh, I I just wanna close with one thing. Since I've been chair, I've had this this habit of the first meeting of the year is to ask the board members two things. Um, since I've been chair, I've had this, this habit of the first meeting of the year is to ask the board members two things. One of them is what you wanna work on, and the second is what would you like to learn about the education? I'm gonna pass on the first one for this reason, that I recognize that all of you are serving on multiple committees and, and working groups. And you're working, so I would say that unless you wanna discuss some change or the, I, I, that, I acknowledge that you're already deeply involved in things. And I would say please continue your good work. Now, that doesn't mean you can't come up and suggest things that you wanna work on, and I'm just saying that I acknowledge all the work you're doing and I don't have a desire to add. Unnecessary burdens on top of that. The second part about education is, you notice we've had, we've had guest speakers come in, but we've also done things like we've gone through the. The ta- the use of, table uses. And, and I found these things, all these exercises really valuable, so I wanted to ask the question is. This year, in addition, we're, we're gonna get the training, open, more training, open meeting, what else? Would you like to see some education on, would you like us to talk, to learn about? And I'll, I'm gonna go around the table, I'm gonna start just for something different, starting this side. Anything on your mind, Jeff, for education this year?
This is something that I, we can, I think we should discuss as a group, and that is, um. The, uh, the value of title search.
Title search.
And the understanding of how to do ownership on our property and also what, what, what. What requirements live in the deed and live with the property, is a property that comes to us. Cause sometimes I think the engineers that we work with don't us, don't necessarily dig as deep as they could. And it puts us in a bind if we were to approve something that doesn't. Not approvable, and I also wanna add, say one thing if I may, which is kind of general time. Mast DOT gave MART over two hundred thousand dollar grant for a shuttle system for Air Shirley and Harvard to go to Emerson. That got announced in the MC, in the, in the MRPC meeting the other night. I don't know what that means. But I wanna put that, I, I, I didn't see announcements on here, but let me use my time for that also. And I know, I, I, I'm sure somebody here in town is, knows about it, but George Cahaly. Mentioned it the other night that they got a two hundred, two hundred plus thousand dollar grant to run a shuttle service to Emerson.
And do you know where, where people would go to?
I know, no.
Don't worry, people can look it up.
The grant was just granted.
Okay, gotcha.
So that's what we know.
Alright, that's excellent. No, that's excellent news, that's very important. Okay, good, so. We'll have to talk about where we find an expert on title search to help, to, to give us some thoughts on that, that'd be good. Nathan, gee, I, I wanna put you, anyone on the spot, if you wanna pass and come back another time, but if you had thoughts on education this year.
Um, I'll pass.
You'll pass? How about you Kathleen, any, anything special?
I have one that I, like I don't know how to articulate very cleanly, so I'm just gonna. Um, is I feel like, and this comes up in, in planning board, but also in like other kind of town groups, is like. Devens and like how as a group we think about devens. Both from the perspective of like, I think a lot in, in conversation, we say like, oh. Uh, pe- people are getting jobs in devens, um, but, uh, devens has regulations from the state about what they can and cannot build. And so, I, I guess I'm asking for like a, like a state of devens of like what it currently is like. What is kind of coming down the pipe and then. But like specifically how that intersects with like. Air and planning, I, I, I don't know who I'm.
No.
I'm not gonna answer it now, but I'm gonna ask the chair, maybe at some point, we have a devens resolution meeting on Wednesday afternoon. Uh, tomorrow afternoon, maybe if the chair can find time, we might do a five-minute update on what's going on with devens.
At, at that meeting?
We meet on a monthly basis, but we, we might wanna salt in, um, to our meeting schedule, a quick five-minute MRPC, devens. And when we have information, I mean, most MRPC, MRPC meetings are boring, they'll all get out. So, we're talking budget.
Clued to, do you know what the MRPC is? I mean. Regional transportation.
Planning commission.
It's a planning commission. Yeah, each regional has like, each region has its own MRP, like type of MRPC, like, you know. And there's MVPC, MRPC, uh, there's a lot of different ones.
Problem is all the money goes to them before it comes to us.
Yeah, like. I, I think like it even comes up when we get, um, I forget the person who spoke, the, the real estate folks and they talk about.
Yes, yep.
I, I feel like all of these topics.
Careful what you ask for.
There's a lot that goes into that, so.
I earn the gray hair, I earn the gray hair, okay? So maybe there's a, there's a meeting that I, we can, we can.
Kinda have a quick ten-minute, like introduction and update on. And, and devens. Yes.
So, I was gonna say nothing, but actually Kathleen, that, um, it was Ron Morrison?
Yep.
Right, he actually got, had so much inform, they both had so much information for us that they actually weren't able to cover the second half of their presentation.
Have them back.
I, I would just ask that in, in maybe the first half of the year, um, cause I think most of it was actually the rental. Information, which was kinda sad to miss, because it's probably, um, more interesting.
Yeah, cause we only talked about.
Uh, yeah, and they've already pulled, like I wouldn't want them to repull information, I would love it, they would be, i- if they're open to coming back and finishing that.
And I still have all that stuff upstairs.
I have it too, cause I thought it was really awesome.
Thank you for making me go last, I really appreciate, cause I wanted to hear these other thoughts first, cause I really appreciate any of the new. You're not, I, I reserve last for me, but go ahead, you're, you're penultimate. I talked to you Jonathan offline a couple of times and, um, thought that the planning board on every meeting. Should have a small piece of the meeting that starts with the very first page of the zoning bylaws that we. Write and just go right through it, section by section by section through the whole year. So we just review the very fir- the, the language we just talked about, the, the language in there that says. You cannot do anything on land, it's not speci- those kinds of things, just start and go right through the book. So we all get a handle, especially new people having a chance to just go get a little. Follow up, so we take it for granted, what I'm thinking is we take a lot, we take it for granted that, um, we all know this stuff, we know. It's a pretty hard stuff.
And you gotta, and I go, how many times do I reach for the book?
I carry it with me everywhere.
I, I, what I would recommend then, I like this idea, is that. What would ha- in, in practice, what Danny would do then in the agenda is so that we're prepared to saying, we're gonna cover bylaw, whatever the. This section, be prepared, one small section at a time, so it's not a burdensome homework assignment.
We'll skip the definitions.
But what, 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 what Danny can do is tell us in advance which ones, then we can read them in advance, be prepared and, and have. That discussion about what they are. So Danny just mentioned something that was interesting that you said that, skip the, because one of the. I learned a lot of things when I got on the board by talking to Charlie Schultz, who's a zoning enforcement officer. And I'll tell you two things that he told me right off the bat, no is not no, one of the, I'll never forget it, he said that to me, cause I was like, no meant no. But it doesn't. To figure it out, and the other thing was that make sure every definition connects to the bylaw. So there's, there's connection between what's in the definitions must match the paragraphs later on where the definition is used. Something like that, you know.
And the use table needs to also.
We could take, take a night on the table use. Just a way for all of us to get familiar with the, like, the, the process, step by step.
Yeah, this, this is something that Jonathan did raise to me as well, um, you know, we have been discussing that about. Doing this for this year and, and bringing up, you know, doing specific things at each meeting.
That'd be my combination of, um, education and what my ideas. And my wish is. I, I would love to have a guest speaker from the other side, so a developer or an engineer. Who comes before us to talk about how they re- how they see projects from their point of view. You know, I'm used to our point of view, uh, that's all I've known. I would love to hear from a developer how they think about site selection, about what's appropriate for the site. You know, what concerns they have, I, I'd love to just get their, you know, i- if we have someone in mind, if we can invite someone to give us like a ten to fifteen minutes off them. Their, their point of view, I'd like to hear it.
It, 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 and I like what you're saying, um, I'm not necessarily, uh, a big fan. Because of, having worked for two of the largest developers in the, in, 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 in America. Um, I would actually turn to one of the attorneys who comes before us, who works on behalf to get that.
Okay, well.
To talk about how, how they, what's the thought process going forward, or an engineer.
Rather than a developer, because why Jeff, what, I wasn't.
Developers looking at it from a money standpoint. It's the engineer that they approach or the attorney that they use has to understand. There's federal law, there's state law, and there's local law, they have to understand and how they go forward with it. Folks who work a lot in this town, Tom Gibbons would be really good. Over the years, Tom Gibbons has said, we wanna argue about this part of that part before the bylaw got fixed. So it's how they approach it, and without actually talking about a specific piece of land or a specific, just that's my take, I don't wanna. I do understand, I, I, what you're saying is really valuable.
I, 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 I like what you said too, but I kinda, I, I, I like the word and.
Yeah, I mean.
Jeff, I, I, I would prefer and rather than nor.
Yes.
Uh, and this, because I still, even, yes, of course the developers are just in money, but there's different roads to money. And I wanna understand how they're thinking about their pathway, because what are all the pieces of the money that they're thinking about? Cause it's not just the land acquisition cost, it's not just the construction cost, there's other costs and I. Soft, but they, they hurt, you know, there's still costs. So I just. I think having that larger picture just makes it easier for us. When we're thinking about bylaw and other changes to anticipate how they might be greeted and.
Et cetera, that, that's all. It's interesting, um, and actually the developer, I'm sorry, the one I would nominate would be the gentleman who's, uh, doing a classroom in high school.
Joe Levine?
I think it's a great idea, but my, the only comment is that I would have is that. Different developers like Joe Levine in particular told us what he likes to do, so he's not doing downtown air. What I would prefer to have is somebody come in and tell us why we're wrong. With the zoning in downtown. What, what, what's wrong with that? Yeah, that, that can be part of it, some, some, you know.
Urban, somebody with urban experience.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
And why exactly, because I think. West, west, we might be wrong pushing form base.
We might be, yeah, exactly, we could be.
And is there, is there a reason for that? I would prefer it to be a, a for-profit versus the, um. Just contrast with the MCO guy, uh, who came, he, he was. Um, I'm not really interested in somebody who's looking, uh, not interested, I'm, I've heard already the, uh, forty B path. I'd like to hear, you know, for-profit path.
I agree, and also simply that most of the applications will be exactly that, right? So, I agree. I think that, uh, my final comment, thank you, is that these are great ideas and I'm so happy the chairman has brought them up, cause we, as a board can always keep learning. Let's face it, we wanna learn all the time. Absolutely. And I think we've gotten better because of the education, I think we have made better choices and decisions, so I think it is good.
Yeah, and CPTC is in March.
That's right, CP, I, I haven't gotten that yet in the mail, so.
I'll let everyone know.
We always go, we roll out.
It's that, it's that weekend, yeah. Holy cross.
Holy cross, up on the top of the hill. Anything else?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I, I have a couple of things that I wanna.
Oh, okay.
I want the, the board to start thinking about.
Um, minor versus major site plan review.
Oh, good one.
We've come into very, uh, there's, there's been a lot of applications that have come in before us at this point that I feel should have been minor. And they were, you know, had to go through the full process of a major site plan application, um, that weren't, I didn't think were fully necessary. Um, so I think finally getting that done is something that, uh, I, I think it's, it's needed. At this point for us. Um, another one is getting another associate member. So I want to, but we'll have to update the regulations to, uh, allow for a, a second associate member. Um, and this came up because, um, I know how, um, stretched thin this board is. Right now, because we are the planning board and every commission that gets, every group that gets created. They want a board member from the planning board. I, I feel like the board is getting stretched very thin, getting put on three, uh, uh, you know, committees at the same time and doing planning board. Plus doing whatever outs they're doing in their free time, I wanna make sure that we can try to even out the load as well. As, you know, coming in, in, in July, we will be doing, you know, uh, committee, uh, assignments again. So I wanna try to get, uh, the regulations updated to allow for a new member and have another member added. Um, and then a couple of other things that I, myself, uh, that me and Heather are working on are the OSRD regs. And the bylaw, the landscape regulations. And another one, one other thing that I'm, I wanna work on is the parking regulations. So.
That's a gigantic one.
Yeah, this, that one's a huge one, um, but I think there's, you know. My number, number, you know, my top two are the minor and major site plan review, the new associate member. You know, those are the first two I really wanna get done in the first half of the year.
So what I propose then is that, uh. I suggest that Danny and I will regroup, go through these items and start actually mapping them to dates. I mean, it'll have to be loose, because we never know what's gonna come before us, but I think that we need to be active on this and we'll start saying, what can we start lining up? To get this done, because otherwise, so we will work together and we'll get these on agendas and it'll be before us. Alright, motion to adjourn?